City Council Meeting of March nineteenth, twenty nineteen has come to order. May I have a roll call, please? I'm sorry, I messed up here. Let's get ready for Pledge of Allegiance first. And Brandon, can you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, Mayor Protem.
Please give a moment of silence for our first responders and military that didn't make it home after their shift. You can join me now.
May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, roll call. Councilmember King.
President.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
President.
Mayor Samra.
Yes.
For the record, councilmembers Baptista and Aguilar are nonattendants and their absence is excused.
Thank you. Changes agenda council staff? Any changes? If not, I'm sorry? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to awards and presentations. Proclamation, this is the presentation by Merced County Department of Public Health, twenty eighteen Farmers Market Report. Is that person here?
They're not.
Okay, then we'll skip on to this one and we'll go to announcements and reports. I don't see Supervisor Espinoza here. We'll go on to staff announcements and reports and I see Public Works getting up or who's getting up first?
Good evening, your Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. Anthony Chavaria, Public Works. I'm here this evening to present the Public Works Activities Report. Basically, what the Activities Report is, is a highlight reel of projects recently completed or projects that we're currently working on. First project is of Main Street Sidewalk Repair Project. This is a before picture. Here's the after. This is a Measure V funded project. Concrete crew did a great job. This is an ongoing project, hazard priority based. We're currently working across the street from the library right now as well. Sewer lateral issue. I brought this before council mid-January. This project has been completed. This lateral was protruding into the gravity main, which is causing backups. The picture of an operations crew making the repair. Picture of the repair. That's a lateral dumping on top of our gravity main. This picture is of a storage tank project repair, repair project. That is inside of the tank on the ceiling where the rafters currently being sandblasted. Contractor has approximately a third of the way complete with interior sandblasting. We're looking at approximately three more weeks of interior sandblasting and several more weeks until the project completion if no workdays are lost.
Just real quick right there, Anthony, for the public and for the council, you know, this, this work especially given the fact that it's inside this huge tank, actually when they do the sandblasting, it makes a lot of noise and we, we understand that there's folks who work at foster farms in the, during, during, during night and so they sleep during the day. So, you know, try and take all those things in consideration and, and so we apologize to those folks on that side of town. And my hope is that they get done, you know, sooner than the three weeks. And after that, it'll just be painting. But as we look at doing this type of work in the future, you know, we can think about those kind of things a little bit further and, and figure out how to, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe they get to do some work on Saturdays, but don't charge us overtime. I don't know. We'll figure it out.
This picture is of the operations crew cleaning dry wells. Now, not all our storm water is pumped to MID canals. We have dry wells located throughout the city. And the dry wells will basically be areas where MID canals aren't accessible for us to pump our storm water. Water is allowed to percolate back into the groundwater, the ground via dry wells. Maintenance is needed. So basically after, after the seasons are over or throughout the seasons, sludge, mud, debris, sand, silt flows into these dry wells and tends to seal them off. And they need to be pumped out, removed, we need to remove the mud, the silt, the sand, the sand, the debris to restore percolation rates. This is a picture of Sergeant Benito A. Aguilar Park Memorial. Turned out great. Awesome showing, big support from the public for the Aguilar family, turned out really This is four feet inside well number thirteen. Apologize for the blurry pictures, I was having some technical difficulties with the Seventy-three feet, we're getting close to hitting groundwater. Now, what you see on the side is called casing, it's iron pipe. Water level, seventy-six feet, that's our static water level. Well thirteen is at Gallo, Gallo Park where we're having the sanding issue. Here's a hundred and fifty-three feet down the well. Hundred and sixty-four feet and you can see we're coming up to screening. This is our first set of screens. Not sure if everybody knows what screening looks like inside of a well, but I did provide a, a short video. If you could press play, please, Chief. As you can see, the screening's pretty clean. There are different sections of the screening that were plugged up. I just wanted to show that just in case nobody seen, knew what a well screening looked like. The repair for well number thirteen. After airlifting and videoing of the well, there was no noticeable failure of the screening or the casing. After consulting with the engineering department and the engineers at Shannon Pump, staff will be moving forward with installing a sand device at the suction of the well pump to help with the sanding issue. Now, probable cause of the sanding may have been due to pump suction where it was located. Now, we found that the screen, the pump bowls, the suction was positioned at, at the screening, the first set of screens. And when you sit, when you have that situation, what happens is as you're pumping water through the screens and other screening starts to plug up, you're going to create a higher velocity, which is going to affect the gravel pack around it. Higher velocities located in one area may disturb the gravel pack and create a voids where sand can enter the well column through the screens. I did provide an elementary picture for the public and council just so you could follow So the pump suction will be located at a blank away from the screening. The pump velocities will be slowed. The bullet suction, that's going to be the remedy. It'll be placed at a blank. What we're trying to do here is by decreasing suction and velocity and placing the pump suction at a blank and away from the screen should alleviate our sanding issue. On to the next issue. Well number eleven sanding issue. We had it shut down this well last Friday due to extreme sanding. It was only able to run for like ten minutes before it plugged up our filtration, sand filtration after the well. We did call Shannon Pump out Monday. They did pull the equipment out of the well and started airlifting today and we'll follow up with videoing of that well. I did provide another video so you could see what the bypassing of the filtration system, what the water looked like. This is coming straight from the well. That's not iron or manganese, that's just a straight steady stream of sand. Did pull some samples from that stream, there's real fine sand that we're finding. Thought this quote was fitting for situations we're having right now. These for the wells. At the end of my report, any questions from council or the public?
Public, any questions for Public Works? If not, council? Just one, real quick. You guys are doing a great job on the sidewalks, but what's doing is making the other sidewalks look kind of out of place. So was it a big effort, a big expense in doing, just go ahead and do it all the way from D Street all the way to the park?
No, I, we can probably tackle that.
I think it would just, it would look better if the whole thing was just done now.
No, I, I agree. We just wanted to prioritize it by hazard. So the most extreme trip areas, just for public safety, we're tackling first, but I agree.
Yeah, I think the two sections you did took out probably what, ten, fifteen percent, maybe twenty percent of the whole thing. You don't have, yeah, you still got a lot, but I think it would look better if you got time and...
Okay.
It's a mula. Well, I saw the thing says Measure V, you know, so...
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from staff? Legal? Okay, Jose?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a few things. First thing, I just wanted to just report to council that we, we sent out a request for proposals for banking services and we appreciate Julie and her team for submitting. We received four. And the, the primary objective of requesting proposals is to determine which bank has the, the highest quality of services at a more, at the most reasonable rate. And then there's also opportunities to look at, to explore an alternative procedural methods. And so, we're going to be evaluating the proposals and, and then coming, coming back to council to let you guys know what we decide or what we recommend. Also, I wanted to share with council that the, the Livingston Widening Project, which is basically making six lanes, you know, through the section.
Ninety-nine.
Yeah, for ninety-nine, you know, that's, that's moving ahead very, really beautiful and we expect that more than likely, a little bit before fall of this year, the work will, will start up in that. And so, that's going to be really great. And then, the other thing too is, and since Mayor Protem, Mayor brought up the sidewalk issues, so if you do identify, if you're out there and you see some really hazardous sidewalks, you know, we were trying to prevent folks from, from tripping and things of that nature, please let us know. We're also looking at the ADA issues. So if, if there's some sidewalks out there that are more than the two percent slope that's required, you know, let us know as well. And some of those handicap domes that we put out there. So we, we are looking at, you know, the full assessment of the community so that we can tackle those issues. And that is all I have for this evening and if you have any questions for me.
Public, any questions for City Manager? Council? If not, then, Mr. King, anything to report?
I've got nothing to report.
Mayor Protem?
Nothing to report.
I'll just add something real quick. March thirty-first is the annual Hola Malap Festival. Twenty-one years. It cannot legally drink. What you want to say about a Sikh parade, but it is twenty-one years now. So, I hope everybody can join us over there and I think it would be great. Other than that, I have nothing else. We'll go on to citizens comment. This session's agenda allows members of public to address the city council, any item not otherwise on the agenda. Members of the public who recognize the mayor should come forward to the lectern and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes and corners with the stop of the media laws. No items will be taken by the city council this evening. For items which are on the agenda, the, this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the city council, each item is brought up. Citizen comments, anybody? If not, then we'll move on to consent agenda. Items on the consent counter are considered routine and uncontroversial will be enacted by one vote unless a separate request by City Manager or City Councilmember. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or City Manager requests them to be removed. Council, any discussion of this item? Okay, we have item one, approval of the warrant register dated March thirteenth, twenty nineteen. Number two is adoption of ordinance amending Livingston Municipal Code by revising Title II Boards and Commissions. Chapter two, Planning Commission, Section two dash two dash two, members, in turn to the office to change the membership of the Planning Commission to allow an additional alternative member. If there are no discussion, then may I have a roll call, please?
Is there a motion, second?
Oh, I'm sorry. I must be in a hurry to get out or something. But at this time, I'll annotate a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I have motion by the Mayor Protem, do I have a second? I will second that motion. May I have roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Samra?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to discussions and potential items. Number three, this is a resolution accepting the Livingston, City of Livingston Independent Audit Report, financial statements for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, City of Livingston Local Transportation Development Act Fund Audit Report and Financial Statements for the Year Ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, and Management Report for the Year Ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. So at this time... Okay, we'll let Mr. Happy Bin take her, that's, it says Brad, but we'll let you have it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Protem, a member of the council. To present the City of Livingston's Independent Audit Report and Financial Statements for Year Ending June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, is our certified public accountant, Ryan
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for having me here tonight to present the audit report for the City of Livingston. I just want to go over a few high-level things and a few comments I have and then I can answer any questions you have. As mentioned, this audit was for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. We issued an unqualified opinion on the financial statements of the city, meaning that we found the financial records of the city to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This year, one of the main changes had to do with the, the OPEB liability, that's the other post-employment benefit liability. In the past, we were slowly amortizing that liability over thirty years, so we were slowly reflecting that, that amount. But this year, the full liability was recognized and on page three, you'll see that, that, that liability is at two point five million. A couple of years ago, we also, if you remember with the CalPERS liability, we also recorded that a few years ago. So now, you're now, your financial statements are kind of reflecting both of those, the pension liability and the OPEB liability. So, gives a more accurate picture of some of the commitments the city has for future, future expenditures. Beyond that, on page five is where the kind of the fund financial statements start. These are our three major funds that by meeting certain criteria, they're considered the major funds. And one of them is the general fund. That fund is the one that carries on most of the, you know, general operations of the city. And on page seven, you can see that overall, the general fund increased by four hundred and sixty-six thousand. And ending with a end-of-year fund balance of three point one million in the general fund. So, that's commendable by the city to continue to build reserves there in the general fund and, and to not be overspending in the general fund. So, the other funds there are operating as intended, so no, nothing out of the ordinary there. I wanted to mention just on the enterprise funds as well, since those are based on user charges and we want to watch those to make sure we're, the charges are sufficient to cover the operating expenses of those funds. So on page ten, you'll notice the water, sanitation, and the domestic wastewater, each had positive changes in their fund balance and are all operating as intended. The one thing I did want to mention again was the industrial wastewater, I know the city's aware of it. It's pretty much not in use right now, but at some point, that's just kind of sitting over there as a million dollar negative fund balance, it's kind of distorting a little bit the, you know, what the general fund, because that's most likely where those funds will have to come from to replenish that. Unless the city can sell the land or do some other thing to, to help recoup that, that negative fund balance in the industrial wastewater fund. So, we've talked with management and that's something we'd like to, you know, address at some point and get that, that fund cleaned up. And the, just following that are the notes to the financial statements. Nothing out of the ordinary there. You'll get more detail on some of the cash, on some of the main asset items and liabilities as far as cash, capital assets, long-term debt, nothing out of the ordinary there. And towards the, towards the end of the, I'm starting on page thirty... Starting on page thirty-two is where you'll get a lot more information on those post-employment healthcare benefits and kind of the factors that go into coming up with those dollar amounts. They're going to fluctuate depending on different investment returns, the discount rate that the actuaries use, healthcare trends, different things like that. So every two years, every other, every year, we're going to do a slight update on it, but every two years, they're going to do another, another updated actuarial study. So, so we'll have one year of a full actuarial study and then an off year where we'll just do a slight update and then another full actuarial study. Also, just beyond that one is the one on CalPERS as well. You got about six or seven pages on each footnote there, kind of giving some more detailed information on each of those liabilities. Towards the back of the financial statements, you have all the other funds of the city. These are considered the non-major funds and those are all operating as intended. At the end of the audit report is a, an audit opinion on the internal controls of the city. This is where we look at, you know, proper segregation of duties. If we're identifying any material misstatements in the financial statements that aren't being identified by management, that would be a material weakness. So, we didn't identify any deficiencies in your internal, internal controls this year. So that's a clean audit opinion as well. We also issued a management letter to the city council, just making some general disclosures to notify you that we didn't have any disagreements with management, that there were no difficulties in completing the audit, that we didn't have to consult with any other outside accountants or auditors. And so, there's no exceptions to any of those items as well. That's in the management report. Just want to thank staff once again for the opportunity we've had to work with the city. We appreciate that opportunity and they do a great job getting us the information we, we need. We're a little bit later this year, just from the city implemented the fixed assets portion of the accounting software, which there were a few hiccups doing that implementation, but I think we've got those bugs worked out now. So, that should make things even a little more streamlined in the future now that we've got that, that module up and running, you know, smoothly. So, so that, that did cause us a few little hiccups, but not, but we were able to get those solved this year, so. Other than that, thank you so much and I'm here to answer any questions.
All right. Audience, any questions for the auditor? And we know the rules and teach your name and address for the record, please.
Catherine Shaw Rodriguez, PO Box one sixty-three, and it's the same question that I ask every year.
Here we go.
Out of time. If you're looking at page nine of the statement of net positions, proprietary funds, water, cash and investment of seven million, six eighty-one, seventy-nine. Just curious as to how much, how much of our cash and investments and similar investments are leftovers, so to speak, from the TCP settlement?
Could you go up to the podium, please?
Before he answers, I could say, Catherine, that one of the, one of the objectives of this year, as you, if you've seen, we've actually have separated and we've come up with different funds. So the actual, so we made adjustments and the TCP is going to have its own fund starting this next fiscal year. But as far as the dollar amount out there, I'm, I'm guessing at this point, but I believe we have somewhere in the vicinity of about six million is the number.
Yeah, I think on the financial statements, we show restricted for capital improvements. Most of that is the TCP funds, there's six point eight million if you look at the bottom of page nine in the water fund, but there could be a little, some, some development impact fees or something else in there too, but we've got six point eight million in restricted funds on, in the water fund.
Does that answer your question? Do you need any closer numbers? We'd be more than happy to send it to you. I knew you were going to ask that, by the way. I knew you were. I was already prepared for that, okay. It's tradition. Okay, any other questions? Council? To me, anytime I see, says no findings and that's really a good sign, so, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will annotate a motion. Does anybody wish to make a motion? Okay, I guess I have to... Okay, I make the motion that we accept the City of Livingston's Independent Audit Report and Financial Statements for the Year End, June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, City of Livingston's Local Transportation Development Act Fund Audit Report and Financial Statements for the Year End, Year Ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, and Management Report for the Year Ended June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Motion by the Mayor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by the Mayor Protem, may I have roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Samra?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on to, this is the resolution adopting a five-year capital improvements program for transportation improvements, project funded with Measure V local funds and SB one R M R A funding. And I see, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Martinez. Go ahead. Too much familiarity.
No, no worries. Good evening, Mayor, and rest of city council members and the public. Noe Martinez, from the Office of the City Engineer, here to present staff report for the five-year capital improvement program for transportation projects. Before I get started, I would like to make a couple clarifications or corrections to the staff report information and corresponding resolution. And the corrections would be made to the list of projects, the project names. So if we look at the... Um, so if we, um, look at the list, either on the staff report or on the resolution for project number twelve, um, the, the project name should actually read, "Construct ADA Curve Ramp at Main Street and I Street Crosswalk", not Fourth Street. So that was a typo. Then the, the other correction, again for, uh, project description, uh, project number thirteen. Uh, actual, uh, project description should read Park and Fourth Street ADA Curve Ramps, two corners. So those are the two corrections that I would like to make for the record. And with that, um, to start with, um, just to, um, reiterate, um, the purpose of, uh, of this resolution is to approve a five-year, uh, capital improvement program for transportation improvement projects funded with both measure V and measure, and SB one RMA funding. Just to give you a quick background on the, on these two funding sources, um, the, uh, the measure V, uh, that, uh, fun, uh, funding program was created back, uh, late twenty sixteen. Um, it was, um, a border, uh, approved, uh, measure for, uh, Merced County that, uh, would generate, um, funding for transportation projects, uh, from a half-cent, uh, transportation, transportation sales tax, uh, over the next thirty years, uh, for the county. And then, um, the SB one funding is a state, uh, funding program that, uh, was, um, created back in April of twenty seventeen. And this, uh, funding, uh, program again was, uh, created for transportation projects, uh, and, uh, funding coming from, um, mainly, uh, vehicle, uh, registration fees, uh, increases, uh, for, um, the state. So with that said, um, the City of Livingston, um, uh, it's anticip- anticipating to receive, uh, approximately three point five million from the two funding sources for the next, uh, five years. So with that in mind, um, staff, um, prepared, uh, and looked at, uh, what kind of, uh, possible projects that could be done, uh, with this funding source, uh, with this funding that is anticipated. And, uh, in addition to that, um, we took advantage of the, uh, recently completed, uh, pavement management system that was done by, um, the COG, uh, for, for the county. So, um, we did look at that, at the findings and, uh, came up with, uh, um, a list of, of projects that corresponded with, uh, their recommendations.
So just a little bit of information on the pavement management system. Basically, in order to, uh, for cost-saving efficiency purposes, we basically piggybacked on the county and all the other municipalities did the same. So we pay our fair share. And, and so as part of that system, we did, uh, an assessment of all of our, uh, streets and that's how we generated. And, uh, Livingston should be proud and I, and I thank the, uh, Public Works and Engineering because, um, we've been pretty creative. I'm not going to share all the secrets, but we've been pretty creative. And we actually have the highest rating, uh, by far of any other municipality or the county. And, um, and so we want to continue to, to have that really great rating. So thank you very much.
That's correct. Uh, and just to, uh, kind of reiterate, reiterate what the city manager has mentioned. By highest rating, we mean the best roads, obviously, right, in the county. Um, so, um, again, um, staff, uh, came together to, um, considered, uh, what we actually have out there for streets and neat and the, uh, the findings of the pavement management system. And we came up with the list of, uh, twenty-one projects that's listed on the staff report and, uh, with the corrections I, I made, uh, mentioned earlier. And, um, these projects, uh, range, uh, from a wide variety, from, um, uh, simple, uh, pothole repairs to sidewalks as, uh, our power works director was, um, mentioning earlier to, um, street resurfacing, um, and, uh, reconstruction and, uh, slurry seals. So, um, I won't go through the whole list here, but, uh, it is available on the staff report. And, uh, have different, um, different areas and locations of the cities where, uh, we're doing these projects. Um, so with that said, um, also just to mention that, um, this, um, list, uh, has, uh, been requested, um, by the Oversight Committee for the, um, the measure V, uh, funding program. And, uh, um, in order to satisfy that requirement, uh, we're presenting this list, uh, tonight, um, and, uh, for your consideration and approval. Uh, with that said, uh, I'll conclude my staff report and if, uh, there's any questions, I'll be happy to, uh, address.
Okay, uh, we'll just hold on for one minute. This, is there, okay. Okay, uh, there, this item is not open to the public. Does anybody wish to come forward and ask questions? I don't see anybody moving forward. Uh, council?
Uh, to me, I don't really have anything. It's just, uh, just a couple of minor questions. Like, like, I, like some things, some are very detailed on just how far it goes. But some of them, like, uh, Dwight Way Quadrant, so it doesn't say Dwight Way kind of go city, county, county, city, kind of. So we're just doing the city portion. We're not gonna help out the.
Correct, yes. We're, every, all of the, the projects here, um, are located within the city limits, yes.
So if the, if it says Dwight Way, that means the entire Dwight Way is going to be done all at once?
No, just the, the half, uh, uh, that corresponds to the city.
I understand, but I mean, the whole section of Dwight Way that belongs to the city, from one end to the other end, right?
Y- yes, so.
Cause there's a freeway ninety-nine in between, you know, so.
Yeah, um, we do have a, uh, a more detailed list of all those projects and, um, if anybody is interested, um.
No, just more of a basic question, so. Okay, coun- uh, council, any further questions? Uh, uh, just another note, if somebody wants new tires, just drive on Robin, make a ride on Peach. Guarantee you pop tires and the county can pay for them. So those are wonderful roads over there. Are you done it already? Well, you gotta take pictures, then, uh, do it again two days later. No, you gotta send pictures in two days. They have to fix it. Okay, anyway, uh, just so you know, but anyway, uh, I'm surprised that we have the best rated roads because some of them really need help too. So shows how bad rest of county is. So based on that, uh, does anybody wish to make a motion? Okay, I make the motion, we adopt a resolution approving the five-year capital improvement program for transportation improvements project funded with measure V, uh, local funds and SB one, Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Act funding.
Got it.
You got that, huh? Mentioned by the mayor, do I have a second?
Uh, second.
Second by the Mayor Pro-Tim. May I have roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tim Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Samra?
Yes.
Motion approved?
Okay, and, uh, any further business, council? If not, we are in adjournment. Everybody have a good evening.